Open up the hearings. The first hearing is for 17 Ruth Street in Lunenburg. I have to give some notifications before we start. This hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access. I'd like to introduce you to the members of the board. To my left is Lisa Normandin, she's the board secretary. I'm Al Gravel. This is Jim Bezakowski, Hans Winthrop, Paul Doherty, and Sheila Gumi. All right. And Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. And then the applicant will have the opportunity come up, make any comments on the application, or submit any additional documents. If you come up, please come forward to the mic, give your name and address. The board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have on the application while you're at the mic. We'll then have a public comment period. Again, you would have to come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. The board will then go into deliberation, and there are required findings for a special permit that will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic flow congestion, danger of fire, explosion, or other reasons. Two, that it will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or the amenities of the neighborhood. That it will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use. That it will not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of the adjacent property. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the application.
Okay, this is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Joel Swenson, 17 Ruth Street in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby makes application as follows. Seeking relief from Lunenburg Bylaw 5312 that states, "The vertical distance between any point on a roof of a building, whether main or accessory, and any point on the side or real lines of its lot shall not exceed the horizontal distance between the same two points by more than five feet. Additional roof peak proposed to be approximately 27.3 above grade at side yard at a distance of 17 feet from lot line. Under bylaw, peak at point would be limited to 22 feet above grade." The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg Zoning Bylaw, Section 5312. The street address of the property is 17 Ruth Street in Lunenburg. Assesses Map 136, Parcel 15. The neighborhood address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Joel Swenson of 17 Ruth Street in Lunenburg. And the deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry deed, page 313, and recorded December 24, 2014. The special permit questions have been answered as follows. The question, "Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire, or explosion, or other reasons?" The reply, "No, the proposed action creates no hazard, danger of fire, or explosion. The proposed action creates no danger to public health." B, "Will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood?" The reply, "No, the proposed action will add to the value of the listed home which adds to the value of surrounding properties and homes." C, "Will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use?" Reply, "Not applicable, no open use." D, "Will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property?" And the reply is, "No, the proposed action will produce no additional noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare at the lot lines beyond that of rest of construction." The following additional information is provided because it is considered important to this case. "The intent of the property owner is to install full roof coverage south-facing solar panels on the portion of the roof at a future time. Only portion of roof facing south without significant tree cover. Changing the shape of the proposed roof will be within bylaw limits would be detrimental to the potential size of solar system installation in the future." And this was signed April 27, 2017, by Joel Swenson of 17 Ruth Street. In addition to that, there's a copy of the list of abutis who were all notified two weeks prior to tonight. And there is a copy of the site map from the assessors office, a copy of the field card, and a detailed building plans and site plan. I do have a letter from the building inspector dated May 30 to Al Gravel, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, from Gary Rhodes, Building Commissioner. "I have reviewed the application for 17 Ruth Street. I agree that under Lunenburg Bylaw, Section 5312, a special permit for a dimensional variation is needed before a building permit can be issued. In this case, the addition is five feet three inches higher than allowed under Section 5312." That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay, I would invite the applicant to step forward if you would.
My name is Joel Swenson from 17 Ruth Street, and thanks for having us tonight, and for hearing our appeal. I will pass it off to my wife, Jessica. She's more in tune with the building industry, so she's gonna talk about it.
Hi, I'm Jessica Swenson, also 17 Ruth Street, obviously. When we designed the building, we spent a couple of years designing it and laying it out and made sure we kept all the vents and everything off of the back roof slope so that we could put solar on in the future. And then we, you know, did all the necessary structural work, everything we did, and then we met with the building inspector and found this little bylaw that we didn't realize existed. So we took a look at what that would mean if we changed the roof to a hip shape or something else to get out of that infringement that we currently are showing. And we found we will lose 60% of our ability to put solar on that roof. Our current house, the way it's situated, sits in front of a whole lot of forest land, so this is the only area that we have that gets sun all day, which is why we were designing it to accept solar. I did do a couple of analysis of a couple of different solar system sizes that in the future we could put onto the roof. We're hoping to do this within a couple of years after the addition. And I can, if I can, I'd pass those out and show you what our potential is, if that's helpful.
You may pass them to the inspector. We'll pass them down.
Thank you.
So on that front page, you'll see a little synopsis that talks about our existing electric usage for the year 2015 and the year 2016, and they're pretty standard. Our proposed addition doesn't really add any major electric load. There's no new kitchen, there's no new dishwashers, nothing, no refrigerators that would be running. So we don't expect to add a significant load. It's mostly just lighting and a couple of small bathrooms. So we expect the load to be somewhere in the 11,000, maybe 11,500 or 12,000 kilowatt-hour range, which would put us into either an eight watt or a 10 watt system depending on the solar panel that we purchased. So I went onto the government website for solar planning and kind of put in all of our information about our southeast-facing slope of the roof. And what it gives us is our potential with a standard solar panel, square footage, and how much room we actually need. And according to that, with our future roof, the way it's currently shown, is 675 square feet available for solar, which would get us about a 10 watt system, I'm sorry, it would get us an eight watt system, which would be below our current electric usage. So we still wouldn't be able to get to 100% without upgrading to a specialty panel. So if we wanted to use our, what we expect to go future, we would need to go to a nine watt system or a 10 watt system, which would need more square footage or a bigger upgrade to the panel. So we're really hoping that we can get approval for our special permit in order to keep the flat roof so that we can be able to maximize our future solar potential.
So to add to that, the reason why it's important to us is because our house is 100% electric. It's heated by electric. Electricity, obviously, is electric. So the cost of heating in the winter can be quite, quite large on a monthly basis. So we're really hoping to put in a system to help, help with that, the cost of heating.
Okay.
I think that's all we have.
If you'll just stand there.
Sure.
If anyone has a question. I'll just ask a few questions. Now, I went down there, I didn't go on your property, but I was in the street, I looked at your property. Because oftentimes when people are on a lake, there's abutis behind them that sometimes it affects what their building is.
Right.
Affects them. You obviously don't have anybody behind you, it is woods.
Correct.
And there were a couple, the addition itself, this is gonna be, is it gonna be, you had a couple of cars parked in the driveway down, is that gonna be a garage car underneath?
With a living room above.
And a living room above.
Correct.
Okay, which I saw in the plans. But I just wanted to make sure that that's what it was.
Yes.
And it appears that on the, if I'm at the road look, on the right-hand side, was that an addition recent, or has that always been?
That's been there for late 90s, maybe? It was an addition, but it's not new.
It was an addition, but it's quite a little bit.
Quite a ways back. And what is the height of that roof there, do you know?
I don't.
Because it appears that it's probably somewhere in that, that neighborhood.
It is, it's actually, we matched that existing roof addition with our new roof so that it would all end up at the same height when we were done.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought, was aesthetically you were trying to get the 27 feet.
Correct.
I knew you had put solar, but I didn't, at that time, think that was your major objective. I thought it was aesthetics and the use of the Roman garage with underneath.
Right.
Okay. That's all I have for right now, and I'd like to open it up to the board. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I had the same thought as you, you matched in the existing roof line. And I just assumed by looking at the dimensions of your lot, you're allowed to put that roof line up without a special permit because you're farther away from the property line, so you had the height to put that one up.
And the grade is much higher on that side of the slope as well.
Right. So, no, as long, in my opinion, as long as you're not going higher than that existing roof, I personally don't have a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you.
I didn't have any questions.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Not any questions.
No questions, okay. I'll just take a quick look, see if I have any more. I do not. So with that, we have all the questions. I will accept the motion.
Public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. Would anybody like to speak from the public? Anybody? No? Okay, thank you. With that, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the permit as requested.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. This is, this is for a height variation as submitted in. It would be for the 27 feet as stated in your application and your plans. With that, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And with that, it is granted. And with that, I have to read a few more little things. Okay, it is a special permit. So the special permit is granted with the contingency that the petition will comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, and ordinances of any and all applicable local state and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance of such conditions may result in revocation of this permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded at the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. The special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use or construction has commenced. And with that, good luck with your new addition.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you. Good luck with the solar.
Thank you.
It really is up there. I put it in a year and a half ago.
On 11?
And it's, I don't pay a penny.
That's what I like to do.
We'll be back to talk to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You want to adjourn for 15 minutes?
Yeah, I think, I think now our next hearing is a continuance, and it's not till 7:30. So I think that we should adjourn until 7:30.
Lisa, did you get, do you have documents from that stuff that you sent?
Welcome back to the Lunenburg ZBA. I don't have to read the things this is being broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. I won't read all of the conditions and what we need findings for the, excuse me. We'll read some of this, but not all of it because this is a continuance. Okay, I will remind you, we are being recorded in accordance with requirements of the Open Meeting Law and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. I'll introduce the board again. This is Lisa Norman, Board Secretary, I'm Al Gravel. This is Jim Bezakowski, Hans Winthrop, and Paul Doherty, and Sheila Lumi. And you have come before us for a small-scale ground-mounted system on 11 Beechview Road. And we had started a hearing, but we were missing some information. So we continued the hearing because the information we were asking for were under required documents. And it was a sun and shadow diagram specific to the proposed installation to determine the solar access. And detailed information including maps, plans, or dimensional sketches showing proposed location of the solar installation, including all setbacks from property lines or distances from structures which are used for habitation adjacent properties, and a landscape diagram showing proposed screening. So I know that you have submitted a lot of documentation. So I would like at this time, if you would, if you would like to come back up, you still have to come up to the mic, give your name and address, and address the board. So if you would like to review all of the new information that you submitted.
Stacy Mantle, 11 Beechview Road. So I submitted additional documents to Lisa's, and you should have, I'll have copies of it. The top diagram that you have is showing the existing property lines. I've changed the setback. We originally had asked for three feet, but it was mentioned the five feet, so we've pushed the system back five feet, as you can see on that. I've listed on there that the, you wanted to have a buffer for the neighbor, so the proposed arborvitae's and would plant those appropriately, with appropriate spacing for future growth. I know our neighbors have some in there, probably about six feet apart. So that was, do you have any questions on anything that I put on that document?
Anybody have any questions about any of this part?
You're asking for two ground mount.
Correct. And they're each 22 by 11 by 13.
Right. So, Mr. Chairman, I think now I recollect what we had talked about. And should I just wait for her to, the applicant, to go through all her documents?
I think so.
Yeah, I want to do that. Okay, sure. Sure. So the second document shows four different array locations. The two that we would prefer are, is Array 1 and 2, and those have the maximum kilowatt-hours on them. And 3 and 4 were showed on this diagram to show that, you know, we don't get the shading. That's correct, yes.
All the data that's in that.
Okay.
The third one is just an aerial view from the top of the trees looking back out at the lake, just to give an idea on how tall the trees are.
Did you climb up there and take that picture?
I did. And these documents were provided by Nate, and so he's got the analysis of the kilowatt-hours, and he can answer any questions you have on that. And then there are the four shading reports for the four different arrays that are on the plan, with 1 and 2 being the proposed arrays.
And then this one?
So that is our plan from our original construction showing the wetlands and the no-touch zone. So that's the hay bale line.
Yep. Do you have anything else you would like to go through? Okay, you had also submitted a lot of documents. The site reports.
From the first, that was the first packet that you had received. It showed, it had the samples of the arrays, you know, the construction of the array, the pipes, and things like that.
And the ones you're proposing, it's 1?
1 and 2.
2.
That are in.
So, just to understand these better, I was trying to understand these better. If I go through this and look at 1 and 2 versus 3 and 4. Now, 3 and 4, what you want is 1 and 2.
Correct, because that gives the maximum kilowatt-hours.
Just to show, right. And so when I go through here, I see a drop from 1, if I'm reading this correctly.
Mm-hmm.
Let's see which one I'm drawing. Like on number 4, just to make sure I understand this, it drops down to, this is the actual site efficiency?
Yes.
If I look at 1, it's in the 90s. If I look at this, it's in the 60s.
Correct.
And that is the, the amount of lost, let's say, electricity that you get because of the difference in shading?
Correct, because it's closer to the tree line.
Okay. That's how I understood. I just went through them, and I wanted to make sure that I was asking.
Yes, 1 and 2 are what we would prefer, but we were asked why we weren't putting them closer down by the trees and for various reasons. So just to show the comparison, Nate had put 3 and 4 on the plan, and done a shading study on all 4.
And it's my understanding that, I know that on some of the older panels, and I think that things are different now, that shade used to, if you had some shade on a panel, the whole panel was not of any use. I couldn't produce anything because of where you were set. And I know that today they have changed that. Now they have, I think they're called directional proportional in them or whatever, so that now, if my understanding is correct, if there is shade on a panel, and it's in 20% shade, what you're losing is just the 20%.
I think Nate can answer to the questions about the panels.
Step up, give your name and your.
Nate Vignola, 11 North Mill Road in Lammestock, CEO of NV Energy. Answer your question. The panels are SolarWorld, made in USA panels. If you block more than half of a cell, the panel will be reduced to 50% of efficiency. That is due to the blocking diode technology.
Okay, that's what I was trying to think, yeah.
In the panel.
Okay, so there's, how many diodes are in a panel?
There should be 3.
3. Okay, but you would lose 50%, not 1/3?
Correct. There is a full reverse blocking diode, and then there's two bypass diodes.
So the, the amount of shade, so I'm just trying to understand, because a lot of this, the location, of course, is based on a lot of the shading because of the trees, and you're trying to get the maximum amount of power out of these. So the amount of shading eclipses to the solar panel directly proportional to the amount of energy production a solar panel loses?
Correct.
Okay. So, in that case, again, in your case, you're saying, if it was 30% shade, you're saying it, would you lose 50%? Or would you lose 30%?
In context of the shading report, a 30% reduction is overall, it's not 30% of the panel at an instant of time.
Okay, okay. And from what I've read, the most important hour is at 10 to 4, 10 a.m. to 4? That's when the sun is at its?
Yes, I usually will say 9 to 3, but tend to, you know, if you're south, it's 9 to 3. But it depends on location, air quality, and whatnot. If, you know, if you're California, you're going to want more for the afternoon, just because that's when they need more power.
Okay, I'm asking these questions because I live in Hickory, I live in that area. I know the path of the sun. I'm trying to figure out, you know, you're asking for, you know, putting it much closer to the side yard than what it is, and I just want to make sure that I understand all the reasons why it needs to be in that location. And I would imagine that the change in the seasons has a influence on those panels as well.
Yes, change in season will have influence on the panels. However, these reports were done in accordance with the Mass CEC guidelines, where any foliage must be in place or accounted for in reports. And any foliage or defoliage is not accountable, or cannot be accounted for in any reports.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll open it up to the board, do any questions?
All right, Mr. Chairman. So I think I recollect now what it was. So, part of the issue that I had was, when I went down there and looked at the site, I asked the applicant, why couldn't they move it? You know, why were they looking for, you were looking for, on a 25-foot setback, you were looking for 22 feet originally on both, both arrays, right? 3 feet from the property line. You've now moved that from 3 feet to 5 feet. And you discussed the fact that, you know, one of the reasons why you were putting it so close to the property line in the first place was that you had the wetlands, and then the trees were 130 feet. And then the other thing that we discussed was, there was, you know, the value of the properties behind, you know, the abutters. But I think the applicant has addressed that with the arborvitae's willingness and plan to put the arborvitae's up there. And now, obviously, looking at the information that the applicant's provided, there's a valid reason as to why, you know, they are where they are in terms of capturing the solar in order to make it probably more cost-effective to capture the savings, right? In terms of where they are. I mean, the other thing that I have to say is, you know, the applicant, not the applicant, but the abutters, there was no abutters last time, and there's no abutters tonight. I mean, if the abutter had an issue, I mean, I, you know, I think there is, you know, there could be a value issue at some point, but, I mean, that's going to be addressed by the arborvitae's coming in. The only other question I had was, did you go to the Conservation Commission, and have they addressed anything yet?
So I've been in contact with Matt Morrow. We actually have an appointment with him tomorrow at 4:30 to do the documents and...
But based on this original plan that you've provided here, on your original building, dwelling, right? You had, there are, there's the buffer zone, and so, that's the reason why you didn't clear those trees in the first place, right?
Correct.
Correct, that's what the, that's what the highlighted line is, that's the...
Yeah, okay, right. Okay, thank you. I'm satisfied, Mr. Chairman. I think that, you know, the applicant's proved why, the reason why they, they were looking for, you know, the special permit to remove it close to the property line and get away from the 25-foot setback.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned.
Jim, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Paul?
Yeah, I got one. I'm just interested, how tall will the arborvitae's grow? And will they themselves become a shading problem?
So the array itself is going to be 13 feet tall, and most likely I will be trimming those to probably about 15 feet, if not, you know, 14, because I don't, because I don't want them to overpower. So it will most likely become an arborvitae hedge and meeting the height requirements.
Any idea how long it takes to fill in?
The ones next to us, our neighbor had planted some next to us. She planted very scrawny ones. They are probably 20 feet tall right now, and they haven't been in for six, five, we've been there seven years. So they've probably been there for five or six years. And, I mean, they've filled out a lot, so they grow pretty fast.
Right, you have to keep on top of that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that's my question, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Sheila?
No questions.
Okay. And with that, I'll open it up to the public. Just a minute. Okay, and with that, I will accept a motion from the board if there's no more questions.
I'll make the motion that we grant the request for a special permit for variance, oh, not a variance, here we go. For the side yard variance to 5 feet.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, with that, I'll take a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. With that, I have one more thing I have to read. The special permit is granted. The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petition will comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, federal boards, or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance to such conditions may result in a revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. The special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use or construction has commenced. And with that, good luck with your solo.
Good luck.
Good luck.
And as there are no more hearings scheduled for tonight, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.